Mayor and council members, we're glad to come back to you. It's been a little bit. We were scheduled for December to come back to you and then some things got shuffled around before the holidays. So we've had a little bit more time to think about this and to prepare our thoughts with you, so we hope we have a good program for you. I have the HNTB team with us, again, our consultants that are helping us think through this. We have Ryan, Kate here in the back, and Stephen. And then on Zoom, we have Allison who will present much of the presentation, but we'll all kind of tag team. So lots of minds have been thinking about this and we're excited to finally come back to you and give you a little bit more information. Happy New Year, by the way. Glad to be the first presentation of the calendar year.
Make a pin.
Back into City Hall.
So just a little reminder of how we got here. We've probably talked about this a million times, but we assume the transit service on July 1 of 2019. Those are some dark days for some at City Hall. I wasn't here at the specific time, but we made it through it. And there's a lot that happened over the last few years, but we had the Go Norman Transit Plan process and we adopted that a year later. We started that in June, July of 2020 and then adopted that a year later, which really lays the framework of how we want our transit system to look in the future. And something that the city somewhat had with OU and CART, but that needed to be updated with the transition of service. And then last year, council directed in the budget some funds for a microtransit pilot program of $750,000. So a few months after the first of the fiscal year, we got to work with that on HNTB and we had our first workshop. We had our kickoff meeting in September and contract approval in September, and then our first workshop was in October. Like we said, it's been a couple of months, but we're excited to come back to you today and give you some more information. So I'm going to turn it over to Allison and the HNTB team and we'll try to get you as much information as possible in the time that we have. And it might be a little heavy at times, so please slow down or feel free to wait till the end to ask questions if you need to. Allison, feel free.
Yes, I think Ryan's actually going to walk us through the agenda.
All right, it's my one slide. I gotta take advantage. Good evening, everyone. Excited to be back, excited to share with you some of the analysis that we've been working on over the last couple of months. As Taylor mentioned, you know, that month, that extra month was actually a blessing in a lot of ways. We were able to do some additional analysis and spend a little bit more time digging through some things, and that's one of the things that we want to talk to you today about. So we're going to go through numerous slides as we usually do. It's very detailed. It's pretty wonky, but we love talking about this stuff and we're hoping for a great discussion today. Walk through alternative analysis process. We'll talk about the first screening that we went through. So we took a lot of ideas, rolled those down into a second screening. And we're actually coming to you today with some recommendations. And we're hoping to have a really great discussion today about those recommendations, get into some details, why we're making those recommendations, how we think this can move forward relatively quickly.
Council, feel free instead of just waiting on a turn, just if you've got a question, there's so few.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So we're gonna, we do have some time at the end for discussion, but we, as always, imagine we're going to have a healthy discussion throughout, so.
And we'll be cognizant that there's another agenda item as well, so we'll try to wrap it up in a timely fashion.
Yep.
It's an exciting topic, too, recodification.
All right. All right, Allison, all yours.
All right. Okay, so first, we're going to walk you through our alternative analysis process to give you an idea of what we've been doing the last couple of months and how we arrived at a recommendation today. So we had two screenings. The first one started with seven alternatives. We developed those along with some criteria to figure out how to analyze them and eliminate the first round of alternatives into a second screening. From there, we did some further analysis based on additional qualitative and quantitative research and sort of thought about those four alternatives and how they could be moved into a package for a recommendation. And that's what we're here to talk you through today. So walking through that first screening, as you recall from mid-October when we had our first workshop, we walked through the results from our council survey and did an interactive session on Mural to talk about anything additional that were your hopes and dreams for this microtransit pilot. So what we heard from that is you really wanted increased convenience for your paratransit customers, filling in gaps in service for after hours, after fixed route service hours, reducing traffic congestion, and less emphasis on the need for parking, convenience and access to the program for all City of Norman residents, access for medical appointments, filling in service gaps with access for most, again, City of Norman residents, access for Southeast or East Norman, affordable access, and efficient use of transit vehicles. So that was really the foundation we used to establish our seven original or initial alternatives. I'll go through these one by one in a couple of slides, but just in general, we picked these out reflecting on those themes. One was that focus on paratransit, and then the remainder of these, filling in service gaps where fixed route isn't currently offered from a service span perspective. We also included the Go Norman Transit Plan priorities just as a good planning practice. We want to, of course, compare to that budget what could be implemented if nothing were done with microtransit and what could be implemented if you move forward with any of the priorities in that plan. So we also used that conversation to establish our criteria. The first several are ones that we are developing based on what we heard. So who's going to be accessing this service and who are the likely users? What is the geographic area being served? How would this impact the existing fixed route services and plans you have for expanding fixed route service in the Go Norman Transit Plan? Of course, cost is a measure. Will this fit within the budget that you've allocated for a pilot? And then the last four are more about operations and the industry perspective that we've gathered as consultants working in microtransit space before. How pilotable is or are any of these alternatives, either using the turnkey approach or a software-only approach, which I'll explain again in the next slide? And then, how appealing would a pilot be to any of our vendors? Any vendors out there? We want to make sure if we put out an RFP that we'll get some healthy responses. And then any additional risks is sort of a grab bag of anything else that we want to consider that's unique to any one of these alternatives that we looked at. So just defining what each of these seven alternatives are. First, we have our on-demand paratransit. So that would be implementing microtransit service, doing a full replacement of existing paratransit operations. Microtransit service can be implemented with wheelchair-accessible vehicles and other accessibility measures in the requesting of service to make sure that it's accessible to that part of the population. Our second alternative, we looked at replacing fixed route service during the day, so when it's currently offered. I know this was something that previous council members had expressed, so we wanted to see how well we could align a pilot with this goal. And the way we defined that was to limit a service that would be capturing about 25% Oh, and our rating scheme here is a green dot, sort of what is an outcome that is most optimal for the criteria, and a red dot is what is least optimal, and yellow is sort of existing ridership. The third alternative was looking at offering microtransit service weeknights after fixed of neutral. So for our first two, criteria, access and geographic area served, because for almost route service spans end. all of these, we, for our Tier 1 screening, considered serving all of Norman, none of The fourth alternative is implementing microtransit service on Sundays where currently no fixed these were really weeded out at this level in terms of these two criteria. route service exists. Fifth alternative would be replacing the fixed route service on Saturdays with microtransit So the only less optimal ratings were under the on-demand paratransit from an access standpoint, Alternative six would be implementing microtransit in Zone 2, defined by your current paratransit simply because that is restricted to a certain part of the population. It's not available to your general population. Zone 2 geographic area. That's sort of the outer expense of City of Norman. And then for alternative six, restricting service to Zone 2 is a limitation there as And then lastly, as I mentioned before, comparing everything to your Go Norman Transit priorities, For impact of fixed route service, we're looking at limitations really with alternative which are really focused on expanding existing service, creating a couple of new routes, two and five because those would be directly replacing or competing with fixed route and increasing frequency. Okay, so the next slide is sort of the meat of our Tier 1 screening. service. Those are a little less optimal in terms of wanting to maintain fixed route service I'm going to settle in on this slide for a few minutes to talk through some of our takeaways that's offering you the most efficiency when providing public transit service. here. The other alternatives came out with neutral or no impact. For alignment with the Go Norman Transit Plan, about half of these are supportive of that plan. Again, this is a bit similar to the fixed route service, but for our alternative two, depending on how the service was designed, might be in competition with fixed route service. So that's why we rated that as a little less than optimal. And for weekday nights, that one, in our Go Norman Transit Plan, it's not necessarily against what is recommended in the plan, but it's not a priority at the same time in the plan to expand fixed route service or any service into the evening hours. Similarly, with alternative six, while this doesn't go against the Go Norman Transit Plan, it wasn't an identified priority to serve for that Zone 2 area. So our costs, we looked at some of these, again, serving all of Norman or where there's, where we can calculate service vehicle hours based on where there is existing demand or existing riders to reference. And so in the case of your paratransit and your fixed route service, looking at replacing fixed route service with microtransit on today's demand would exceed the pilot budget. So that's why that had a red or less optimal rating. For fixed route supplemental, even if we only sought to serve 25% of your existing weekday demand, that would still, again, exceed the pilot budget. Alternatives five and six were, we said, neutral because they were kind of right on the border with the pilot budget. They're possible, but might be slightly over depending on what vendors came back and said as far as how much that might cost. The last two, weekday nights and Sunday service, those are rated green within the budget, although this one is a little bit tricky or misleading because in this case, we don't have existing service during these time spans. And so instead of relying on existing rider demand, which we don't have estimates for, we instead fixed the service offering to your budget. For pilotability using turnkey, all the alternatives would be fine. The only one we thought might be difficult is the paratransit service. If we are proposing it as a replacement of your existing paratransit service, this might be difficult, operationally speaking, to put a pause on your current services for a year, not having those vehicles or staff being used for a year. And then if for some reason at the end of the pilot that needs to be, or the pilot's not extended, then you'd have to re-implement, reinvest in those vehicles and employees. Pilotability using software only, this one is basically rating poorly for where you see them red because we would need, oh, and I'm sorry, let me back up a second. I forgot to say that. For software only, we're saying that this would be, you're going out to vendors just for the microtransit software, but you would be using your existing vehicles and staff to offer this service. So basically where we're seeing this would be more difficult is where we are measuring there to be an increase in demand for microtransit service that would require additional vehicles and staff to service. The rider demand for Sunday service and for your on-demand paratransit, we put as neutral, thinking that those are more lower demand markets, that you might not need an additional investment in vehicles or staff. For standalone alternative vendor attractiveness, this is looking again at these, each of these alternatives singly and saying, would a vendor compete for offering this service? And this is strongly aligned with the budget. Vendors want to have a larger budget to implement their service because there's a significant cost to just starting service and investing in a new location. So our first two alternatives, which were the most costly, would be appealing to a vendor because they stand to make more money from that service. And the remaining four were potentially too small in budget, but also potentially too limited in the number of hours or days offered, that it would be difficult for a vendor to staff that in terms of whether that, those would be appealing shifts for employees.
Hold on, Allison.
I just have a question about the way, like, I guess, the way that the cost, so we have a certain amount that's allotted, that $750,000 that we, as a city, are implementing into the pilot program. But was it considered, because we've always talked about potentially having customers pay for this service. So was that something that was taken into consideration in this, like, attractiveness to vendors? Because they could still recoup costs if it's a pay-for-service, like, the city's putting in some money, but then riders would also be paying some, so that would offset the cost. Was that considered?
We talked about cost a little, or fare a little bit, but we just wanted to get through what made sense practically to operate. We can, it gets a little tricky implementing a fare when we don't charge a fare right now. Just because we'd have to start collection procedures, we'd have to, if it was us doing it. If it's turnkey, yes, they could recoup some of those costs, but we, some of these options, we don't know what the fare would be, so we'd probably still have to upfront that bill and see what the fare would be. And honestly, fare doesn't make a ton of money in the public transit world, so we couldn't really rely on that for a lot unless we had a set amount. If we wanted to capture 10, 20, 30% of the operating cost, obviously the fare would go up with that, and that would decrease access to users as well. So fare's a little tricky in setting, first of all, but then just not knowing exactly what your rider demand is or what the fare should be is.
It'd also be hard because that should be a tiered, a fare should be a tiered system.
It could be, yeah.
Kids, one thing.
Right. And it could be tiered on mileage. Maybe your first mileage, one to five, is that marks for free, and then the rest is, goes up and up and up. So it's just really tricky. So we wanted to try to zero in on what the, what service we wanted first.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I just, I know that there's a lot of factors to consider, which is what makes this really complicated as we're thinking about, like, how to integrate this with what we already have.
Right. And that, I know we're almost done with these criteria, but we spent a lot of time on these, and I think it's worth going through each one, as Allison said, because this really shows you what our thought process was for each one of them, so.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll let Allison finish up this slide real quick.
Okay. So lastly, on the risks row, for on-demand paratransit, we rated that slightly less than optimal because it's limited to a certain market. It would not allow lessons learned in terms of how microtransit might be used by the general market in Norman. So that might be a little more difficult if you want to extend the pilot beyond the pilot phase. For the alternative two, fixed route supplemental, this would be competition with the fixed route system. It would be kind of difficult to distill out, again, lessons learned when you have a microtransit service that's operating side by side with fixed route. And then lastly, for the suburban and rural mobility alternative, that one might introduce the perspective that there's inequity of service being offered because it is more expensive for the passenger, especially in a low-demand area with fewer riders. It may look like that those, that part of Norman is receiving better service than those that have access to fixed route service. Okay, so I was going to pause there. Were there any other questions before I move to the next slide? We're going to talk about how, which ones we eliminated at this point in the screening.
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. So we met with City of Norman staff to talk about these findings. Oops, I forgot to move this slide. And we talked about eliminating alternatives two, six, and seven. Eliminating alternative seven, that was helpful to have for our exercise in talking through how these alternatives compare, but ultimately, we understand that City of Norman is committed to a pilot and wants to move forward with one.
And really, three, four, and five, sorry, Allison, kind of go with the plan anyways, so we thought that, that made sense to eliminate that as a whole at this point.
And alternatives two and six were also eliminated because overall, they didn't seem to pose as fruitful a case for a microtransit pilot. For alternative two, getting back to that risk I just mentioned, aside from it being too costly, it's just a little bit more difficult to wrap our heads around from a lessons-learned standpoint when it's offered alongside fixed route service. And then alternative six, I think overall, you can see sort of the colors are, there's just fewer greens. It wouldn't offer as much lessons learned. There's less demand out there. And with that risk of, you know, offering better service potentially to a less populated area in Norman might not be seen as an equitable distribution of resources. So from there, we moved the remaining four alternatives into our Tier 2 screening. So just a summary of, again, those four that remain are the on-demand paratransit, weekday nights, Sunday service, and replacement of Saturday service, fixed route. So for our second screening, we're really thinking more holistically about the four alternatives. We continue to do research and have conversations with vendors, also with Embark and with the existing software service provider to see what makes sense at this point. We talked with vendors about feasibility from an operations perspective, including startup costs and how they prefer to, or how they can stack their service. We also thought about rider comprehension. How would all of these alternatives fit into your whole transit system? How easy would it be to comprehend and take up this service into their daily habits? We looked again at our costs and refined those further. And then, again, internal feasibility, had some conversations with Embark in terms of what the direction they're going in and anything they're planning in their near future for on-demand service and what can be offered through existing software that City of Norman uses, and whether there were any options there. So for on-demand paratransit, when we were talking with Embark, they are planning to pursue a contracted on-demand service in the near term. So we think it makes sense to partner with Embark and pursue on-demand or paratransit service when they pursue it.
And Allison, can I expand on that one a little bit?
Yeah.
So I think she said, I think you said service, but we mean software, which can get a little, yes, service and software. But Embark got a grant to pursue a better paratransit software in the last couple of months, which Dr. Marilyn Dillon with Embark is very excited about. She wants this software that can do everything that she's ever wanted it to do. It's very complicated to schedule paratransit. She wants to co-mingle trips with the vehicles when they're available, but of course, when they're bought with federal funds, you have to make sure that you're co-mingling them using, doing other services that they may not have been bought for specifically, but you can still track that data and maybe cost it out differently. So with that, she anticipates having a way to do on-demand service through that, and with our partnership with Embark, we'd be maybe moving with them to that software anyways. And so we think it makes sense to, we think it'll be within, under two years, but we wanted to be comfortable, but that we would maybe piece this off, let that software come to fruition, and see how we could expand the paratransit service into an on-demand model. After that, we could then get a cost estimate from Embark. You know, it's two, three more drivers, here's the cost, it'll be this much to do online fare payment, maybe, so we don't have to collect cash. That would be a way to make it way more efficient for fare media and collection, since we don't do that down here already. So we kind of wanted to peel that one off and maybe put a break on it for just a year, a year and a half and see how it goes.
And that would give Norman residents more access to, like, OU Health Science Center and those kinds of places.
Well, paratransit's funny because we still play with these imaginary lines of political boundaries where we can't cross as easily as we can with fixed route, with paratransit, but we're hoping that we may be able to do that with this software.
Could we dissolve those boundaries? I mean, that's, that's, those are artificial.
Since it's on-demand, you would be able to, like, go where you want, right?
Just the regulations we work with are a little clunky, and, but with the software, if we could keep track of, hey, that vehicle left Norman at whatever time, whatever mileage, and then it spent so much time in Oklahoma City, and we could break those costs out, we could theoretically have more of a regional paratransit system, which is another one of the aspects that Marilyn.
Is that realistic?
Is it realistic? I think so. It's just a little clunky.
So with this new updated software, I'm sure that you don't know all of the things that it could potentially do, or maybe you've talked to them a little bit. But by, you mean that, like, our paratransit customers would be able to, like, have some kind of login, they would have to do the 24-hour kind of call-in to schedule a ride? It would be more available in, like, the immediate.
Same-day service.
Yeah.
It could be on an app, it could be call-in still. Of course, we'd have to play with it a little bit. Realistically, we may not get, be able to get somebody there in five minutes. It might be a 30-minute window, something like that.
Cut down the 24-hour notice.
And then because the fare playing with, we'd have to see what the demand is, because if you just do on-demand, it could be infinite, right? So we don't have infinite resources, we'd have to move that.
Yeah, okay. That's exciting.
Assistant member, home?
My, my top priority with this microtransit idea has been to reduce the wait time for paratransit riders. My second priority has been fill in gaps where fixed route doesn't go, but top one, top reason for supporting this exploration has been to reduce that 24-hour period. So, and you're saying this software is a piece of that puzzle that could, that could get us there.
And I think it's a main piece. One way or another, we need the capabilities to do it.
Right.
But this would make it, this is one of those outlying pieces of regionalization we've been working on with Embark of trying to consolidate the softwares that we use so that way Embark can better manage all of the transit within central Oklahoma. So I think this is a major piece of that, not just a small piece, but.
I'll just add that when we were having these conversations with Embark, right, this was, like, awesome because this was a way for us to kind of move forward with an opportunity to improve paratransit while also trying to find a true microtransit pilot that we can move forward. So, you know, having our cake and eating it, too, in some regards, so, in that perspective. And just the fact that Embark is moving in this direction. Cut down the 24-hour notice.
And then because the fare playing with, we'd have to see what the demand is, because if you just do on-demand, it could be infinite, right? So we don't have infinite resources, we'd have to move that.
Yeah, okay. That's exciting.
Ms. Member, home?
My, my top priority with this microtransit idea has been to reduce the wait time for pair transit riders. My second priority has been fill in gaps where fixed route doesn't go, but top one, top reason for supporting this exploration has been to reduce that 24-hour period. So, and you're saying this software is a piece of that puzzle that could get us there.
And I think it's a main piece. One way or another, we need the capabilities to do it.
Right.
But this would make it, this is one of those outlying pieces of regionalization we've been working on with Embark of trying to consolidate the softwares that we use so that way Embark can better manage all of the transit within central Oklahoma. So I think this is a major piece to that, not just a small piece, but.
I'll just add that when we were having these conversations with Embark, right, this was like awesome, because this was a way for us to kind of move forward with an opportunity to improve pair transit while also trying to find a true microtransit pilot that we can move forward. So, you know, having our cake and eating it too, in some regards, so in that perspective. And just the fact that Embark is moving in this direction anyway, I think those things combined make this very, very doable and exciting and something that makes some sense over the next-
Common sense.
Yeah, it is. It's very common sense.
We realize it wouldn't be an immediate fix, but we feel like long-term, this would be the best solution for pair transit. Unless there's any more questions about that, the other piece, I'll let Allison talk about. If it'll go.
Just checking it on. So yeah, just to add to what Marilyn was saying, I think this question of getting on-demand software implemented for pair transit users isn't so much about whether it should be done, but just when there's budget and a process available to pursue it. I don't think we, it's not as compelling a pilot. I think our takeaway would be if we did it, that it's a good worthwhile investment.
Yeah, and it would be something, sorry, it'd be something we'd want to do internally too, because like we were saying, the pilot ability, if we just break off the on-demand pair transit piece, there's really not a lot of meat to chew on for somebody to potentially come in. So I think we'd want to try to do that in-house, probably.
There's, this has been done nationally, a ton, right? Like this idea of combining on-demand with pair transit and making that a better service. We don't need to pilot that. We know that works. We have too much evidence nationally that shows that this is a great thing and has been very productive for a lot of other agencies and cities across the country. Let's move this thing forward, make that decision, figure out an actual pilot.
I agree.
Yeah, so for our remaining alternatives, again, we're thinking again about these bigger picture, what we learned at this stage in the process and what we settled on was moving all three forward as a package with some modifications to, to a couple of them, which I'll talk through. So talking through what we're recommending for the pilot, we first are looking at weekday nights. This offers enough service and enough dollars for a vendor to go after, sort of setting the foundation for a pilot. So offering weekday night service, one thing we did modify from this, from our first screening, was to redefine the span for weekday nights. So originally, we had looked at this offering of microtransit service for the night defined as everything, every hour outside of fixed route service, so from about 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Once we narrowed it down to these three, we thought it would be a better proposal, a better pilot, and more bang for your buck if we, instead of doing all night, we restricted to about six hours of the night. And then that leaves extra budget over for some of these higher-ranked alternatives. That being, including Saturday service in the nighttime again, instead of doing a full daytime service, full daytime added to weekday nights probably would exceed the budget, but we think that this is a good add-on. It would be easy for customers to comprehend, you know, all they have to think about is, okay, we've got fixed route, Monday through Saturday, now I have a microtransit service Monday through Saturday at night, sort of operating in parallel to your fixed route services. Then we still had some budget left over in our estimate, so we wanted to add in eight hours of service on Sunday during the day. So this is great, being able to offer some more mobility services where you currently don't offer any, and still hopefully remaining within our budget. So this is a summary of what we're recommending. The service span would be, again, six hours Monday through Saturday evenings. We're looking at potentially 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM, that could be 7:00 PM to 1:00 AM. We settled on a six-hour span as being the minimum that a vendor would be able to staff, sort of a minimum shift that employees would find appealing. And then again, an eight-hour span of service on Sundays. One thing that we hadn't talked about yet that's different, once we got to this level of our analysis, is introducing a zone and recommending that this be implemented during the pilot as a limited-sized zone. And I'm gonna talk through why we're recommending that in the next slide, but overall, we feel confident and comfortable with recommending this pilot. It puts the strongest case forward, we think, for our microtransit pilot to succeed. It does offer a little bit of overlap in terms of your time spans with fixed route, which would be a good case study for the service's appeal compared to fixed route without, you know, losing out on the efficiencies of fixed route. It's still good to have fixed route service, having that visible service for your citizenry. It allows for little to no disruption to Embark's current operations, so as a pilot, this can be done as turnkey and removed or modified after the pilot period ends. It's a sufficient service, or has sufficient service periods to be attracted to the vendor and for uptake by riders. And then lastly, it fits the budget as we're estimating. Again, we don't know exactly what each vendor would perceive as the cost for this service, but we do feel confident. It's within the run of your budget and based on a vendor response, there are some workable trade-offs without completely diluting what we're suggesting. So getting into a discussion about the pilot zones and sort of the trade-offs there. And when I, when we put here on the screen a small zone, we're talking about in around five square miles, and we have an example of what that will look like on the next slide. But by starting with a small zone for the pilot, we're assuring service standards such as low wait times for the ride request, and that's really that convenience factor that we've been talking about all along. We want something that we can request and have a response relatively quickly, and that will give us the best chance at rider satisfaction. Having a smaller pilot zone also allows us to place that zone in an area of Norman that has ridership demand and the demographics that are most likely to use the service. So again, that's giving us the best chance at success for our microtransit pilot and for riders to uptake the service. We'll also gain an understanding in rider behavior and lessons learned to justify moving beyond the pilot period. So we have put our best foot forward, we have some success, and we know who are the types of people that are gonna be taking the service, then we can move forward from there, either expanding the zone or adding additional zones. And so if we started with a large zone, this is just the inverse of what we get from the small zone. So if we put something out there that's too many square miles, we might get too much demand for the number of vehicles and drivers we're offering, and then we're gonna set ourselves up for disappointment. So we have too much demand and not enough vehicles and drivers to fulfill it, that will lead to longer wait times after requests, and this could dissuade people trying the service for the first time from trying it again.
Taylor or Allison, I have a question on that. You said that that service area is five square miles.
Well, that's, that's just a preliminary guess and some, some idea to chew on of a small zone versus a large zone.
Okay, just a, just an idea.
Yeah, just an idea. And I know we're not too keen on the zone idea, but I think Allison's trying to do a good job of saying, I think if we treat the City of Norman as one large zone, our budget doesn't fit how to serve, provide the best service on the street with the budget we have. So I think if we truly have a pilot in a small, small-ish area, then we could learn from it. We can learn from it and we can expand it outward, right?
So just to be clear about the zones, pickup and drop-off would have to be within that zone?
Yeah, that's correct.
And there's some, there's some nuances to that, but generally, the zone concept is yes, pickup and drop-off within the zone, but you can also have spots outside of the zone that are like high activity generators, if it's a transit hub, a hospital.
Yeah, Norman region, was I was gonna say, is, you know, it's kind of outside of core Norman, the health plex, so maybe we say that's a specific destination that we want people to be able to access, but.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about like nights, if we're thinking about late evenings, like where are people working to, that, you know, typically would ride our fixed route system?
Right.
Making sure that we're servicing those individuals who work past when our fixed route rides.
Right.
You know, is serviceable.
Exactly.
So, like, I think those are things that were really important to us. It's like, how do people get home? They ride the bus to work, but then how can they get home? So I want to make sure that we're still able to service them through this pilot, because, you know, I, I know I skipped ahead on the slide, so I'm looking at the map, but like what five square miles could look like, and, you know, that's already where routes are running, but I guess this is a complement to that.
Right.
So if people are riding somewhere and then can't get home, I think that that's important for us to think about.
And I think it's good to point out, Allison was gonna get to this, but we were thinking an RFP wouldn't necessarily define a zone. We let industry tell us, come back to us and say, hey, we think it'd be most successful if you, if the microtransit service was here.
Yeah.
Which we could chew on, we wouldn't have to necessarily go with that, but we think that's a good idea, let the vendors and the experts decide that, to an extent. And maybe we can go ahead and go to the next slide, Allison, but we just plopped a dot in the middle of Norman and just did five, we didn't want to give any preconceived ideas of where the zones would be, but we just wanted to give an idea of what the size was. So this could shove right, left, up, down, and it could be, get bigger, smaller, it could be seven and a half square miles. We just, the budget really begs us to have some sort of defined area, yeah.
I will, I will add that, so when you're building an RFP for something like this, you're building it in a way that you're producing your goals. What would you like to see? We would like to see response times in 15 minutes. We would like to see generally this demographic of people served, these times, obviously, based on what we're showing here, and then maybe we do give some thought and ideas for them to chew on, on destinations, origin destination items. What are things that, that they would like or think about as they're building out their model? One of the cool things is vendors and industry in general, they have pretty complex tools at their disposal that quickly, they can draw boundaries very quickly, and the outputs of those are, this is how many vehicles it'll take, this is generally how, who would be served, ridership is likely to be, based on all that demographic information, and what cost is. So they'll be able to quickly and in a dynamic way be able to kind of carve out what they think makes some sense. And that could very much include islands outside of that core area that are, that need to be served based on exactly what we're talking about today.
And that makes sense, trying to do a math model has to have a parameter on the outside of it somehow.
Exactly.
How it's a silly model. But the neat thing or the thing to consider in there, it'll be interesting to find out what the behaviors are, because I would expect them to be grocery stores, medical facilities, those kinds, Lowe's, the other kinds of things like that. But it'll be interesting to find out how real that is.
Right, and it could be job-specific, where you're working late night at a retail store or a bar downtown, you know, it could be whatever your occupation is and you have to get home late at night, right? Or, or maybe you have to get home late at night because you can't drive.
Yeah.
You might not be able to, so.
Okay.
One reason or another.
You come from OU. I was a buyer at OU. I used to do the contract, I forgot what it was called, it was like the safe ride thing for like the drunk kids on campus corner.
Yeah.
Same sort of thing. We did the contract, it was always like $60,000, so they called someone, like the university would like pay for it, right? Like, is that something that we could add? Like, I know the wee hours in the morning, not everybody needs like a ride, but is that something that we could factor in as like an option, that we have something available?
Well, I think that's what this could do.
Like two in the morning, yeah.
Right, well, we'd have to play with the times.
Outside for hours, that's what I'm talking about.
We'd have to play with the times.
Yeah.
We could, like we suggested, move the weekday nights or even the Saturday night to 1:00 PM or 1:00 AM.
But like the outliers, like the one-offs.
The problem with that is we don't really have any providers in the Norman area anymore. A lot of the taxi cabs are no longer available, so it's hard to ship that out to a vendor locally that could just, that's already out there doing other trips.
Like Uber or something.
Yeah, we could, we could look into that, but honestly, a lot of Uber and Lyft rides have gone down too as well, so we could definitely look into that, but this service would be available for that.
Well, I know, but it's just like, we do have like the disabled person that like falls at 3:30 in the morning and they like don't need to go to an ER, but like, you know, I don't know, it's anything, like, I don't know.
Just also for the viewers potentially at home, we wouldn't, if we're not defining an area, I mean, the zone doesn't necessarily have to be a perfect circle, right? Like, it would be jagged and depending on like what streets are gonna go down, so like, they would tell us, like, okay, this is the map, this is how we're drawing it, so it wouldn't just say like five square miles and plop.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, because you can see the top left of the 10 square miles, for example, it's part of the airport. We don't need to have that in the zone, right?
Right, so you can carve and cut.
Exactly.
Okay.
You could even say maybe the zone is within X distance of the fixed routes or the proposed fixed routes.
Yeah, we could play with it like pair transit zone one, we could do something like that, but I think, do you know what pair transit zone one is right now, square mileage?
We were estimating probably, zone one was probably like 25 square miles.
Yeah, because you can see from the, the routes on here, if you did a three-quarter of a mile buffer, but we could pare that down to a quarter of a mile, we could play with that as well, but I really think industry, as much as we don't want them, you know, relinquish control on some of that stuff, they, they know how to run these things and get riders in the, in the seats and.
Just off that concept, it seemed that 10 square miles would catch 50% plus of this whole city's population.
Yeah.
Just that, if it were that circle, that catches most of the-
And again, we do it for a year and maybe we adjust it here or there, maybe it's so successful, we want to do more, so we make it bigger. There's lots of opportunities for expansion with that. And I know we're getting up to 620, so we just have a couple more slides and then we can end the discussion.
Yeah, I think I can skip the, we talked through our pair transit recommendations. So the remaining was just to have some prompts if we hadn't had sufficient discussion already.
Yeah, and I think we've had a lot of discussion, so I'll try to wrap it up here with a next step slide and we can kind of end the discussion based on that. So if you guys agree with majority of what we discussed and we have a little direction moving forward, we could go with an implementation plan of putting together RFP, maybe what that looks like. We could start drafting RFP for what we talked about, coordination with Embark service or pair transit software, we talked about that at the beginning of making sure we're locked up with them and whatever we need to do to, you know, keep that pair transit service becoming a more regional operation and at least more efficient with having the one provider on one software. And then I just wanted to throw this in there because Embark does some interesting things in Oklahoma City that we currently don't do down here, and I, I was counting on my fingers a while ago, because we're, we're in our fourth year of operation, so we're, we've really grown up really fast and we're considering some things that a lot of cities take, you know, a long time to get to, and we've had transit for a long time, but we haven't had it at the city department, so I'm really proud of how, you know, forward-thinking you all are in trying to get us the best service we can. But Embark, just something to consider, maybe not with this, but they do some non-emergency medical trips, it's outside of FTA and outside, kind of like what we're talking about, but for specific populations. Grocery routes, they have additional funding for some service for that, food boxes, you know, delivering meals, and then share fare. This is somewhat similar to the safe ride, but basically, they have a set number of participants and they get a, they can split half of a taxi ride or Uber ride with, or a vendor, whatever vendors are identified to be in the share fare program. And so it just expands your, your pocketbook a little bit for those low-income or maybe older folks that can't get around as well. It allows more mobility that way. So just some things to chew on that, we have some additional transportation services we could look at with Embark or, or at least look at doing down here. We just, we have a lot going on, so we haven't been able to expand on those the last couple of years. But again, Dr. Dillon with Embark, she's really excited about those, she oversees those and she'd be happy to come discuss any of those with you guys at any time, so.
So remember.
So the proposed pilot being evening nights. So the proposed pilot being evening nights, some overlap Saturday and Sunday standalone. Would that service be accessible?
Yeah, they, they would be required to have.
So Sunday service would be paratransit accessible?
Because they're filling in our shoes, they'd be required to have some accessible vehicles for those folks that need it, just like we would. And just the, yeah, just to clarify, there'd be overlap in the evenings on the weekday. So we operate till 10:00 PM right now, so there would be an overlap where maybe we could shove it a little bit in the evening or early morning. But again, thinking about ridership, there may be more ridership for on-demand earlier in the evening, so we'd have to play with that a little bit. And then there'd be a little bit of overlap on Saturdays, but we only go till 7:00 PM, so this would be a really big increase on Saturdays. And then of course, Sundays, we don't do anything right now, so.
First, I just want to say thank you for distilling all of this really complicated information into something that I think we can actually implement. I know that it was a tall task. We've been talking about this for a while. And I know that initially we talked a lot about what we hope to see, like multiple years in the future, like this is what we'd love to see for transit in Norman and who we would like to service. But I think we have to bring it back to this is a pilot program, this is the first implementation of like what this is going to look like, and it's a place to start and to see what happens. And I think that the recommendations are really good for what we're hoping to eventually achieve in the future. It gives us a starting point to step towards bigger kind of goals. So I'm, I'm excited about how this pilot program could go, and I hope that we get people to respond to the RFP. So supportive.
I agree. Does anybody disagree with furthering on?
I really appreciate you guys taking all that and really digesting it. And, you know, including this, we have a lot to look forward to. We got our first electric buses a couple weeks ago that we're looking forward to put into service. The routes that were shown on that zone map are the new routes that haven't started yet that we hope to start later next year. So we're excited to see how that goes and just hopefully we're expanding transportation and making it more efficient for, for everybody regardless of what mode they choose, whether it's fixed route, paratransit, or maybe this microtransit in the future, so.
And it's going to take tweaking in the middle. We're going to take a shot, adjust, take another shot. And so it's just, it'll be neat as the population changes. My personal thing is non-medical transport for, just because people have trouble getting up to the city or getting up to the VA or getting up to anywhere and being able to do that. But we're not there yet.
Yeah, and that's, it's very frustrating as providers of transit that these boundaries that we draw are really set in stone. But again, we're really focused on trying to regionalize transit as much as we can in central Oklahoma. That's part of the vision of partnering with Embark, right? When we did that three and a half years ago. So we're excited to see where that goes for the software. And, and with the RTA too, that's another leg of increased transit options in central Oklahoma that's coming in the near future, hopefully. So just a lot to look forward to. And again, with your blessing on this, we'll move forward with maybe an implementation plan and possibly looking at RFP language and maybe look at circling back around too if we need to.
Please do.
Okay.
Sean, do you think we have? Anything you want to add, Sean? We had the same idea at the same time.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you, Allison, thank you.
Thank you, Al.
You gonna hobble on over?
Catherine, did you need this?
No.
Okay.
She's got everything memorized.
That means this is going to be very quick. No, it's good.
All right. Item two, discussion regarding the recodification process.
Hey, some of you have heard us do this over and over for a couple of years now, it's a longer, I think, honestly. But we started this process back in the fall of 21, I'm sorry, fall of 2020 with MuniCode. MuniCode is, is the group we work with who publishes our ordinances now. And we, we knew they had extra capabilities within their software, but in order to access those, we really needed to recodify. Recodification is done in most cities every 10 years. It's required for any penal ordinances. We have kept up a loose leaf supplement, so we've never had to actually do a recodification. So we have not done this, I think, I should have written it down, 50 years? Yeah, 50 years.
Sure.
Norman, true Norman.
The benefit of recodification is you get someone who is just looking at your code and comparing it to state law, comparing it to provisions within itself and federal law to make sure you don't have any conflicts. MuniCode had a staff attorney who did that. She worked with Jeannie Snyder from my office, who had the tall task of going through every line in the code book more than once. And so they.
The work might be some error, sorry.
So then they have an editing team that tries to catch any spelling errors or things like that. She's been through that draft multiple times. I don't think my fingers can make it this big as the draft.
Does that include like old things that we might even know about that are completely absurd, like?
Right. Well, we don't have anything too crazy. We had our old cable franchise ordinance in there, going back to the days when you had to send COCs to the voters to get approved, and it was all in the ordinance. But the FCC law changed in the early 2000s, and so now we do all of that by contract. We don't need that in there anymore. So that's coming out, things like that. The two really most exciting things, I think, that, that people who look in the code often will enjoy is the zoning ordinance is finally going to be part of our code of ordinances. This website is much more searchable and user-friendly than a PDF document could ever dream of being. So that's really helpful and I'm super excited about that for the convenience. The other major difference, I think, is really the fee schedule. So MuniCode, when, when they go through, they look at how to kind of reorganize your code. Every chapter number's different, there's going to be a major learning curve for the staff members who've been here a long time. It can just rattle off those numbers. Every number has changed, every single number, so.
That's what she's saying.
That's going to be the painful part, every section number is different.
Yeah.
So a lot of things will have to be changed on. Signs have said, you know.
Signs, forms.
Forms, that's going to take some time.
Yeah, so we'll be working on all of that, but the fee schedule, all of the fees, other than water rates, because they're special, you know, utility rates. But the fees, for the most part, are all going to be in one place. When we have gone through the exercise of trying to look at the fees and we're pulling from 100 different places to look at all these fees, we will have that all in one fee schedule now. So that will be super convenient and, and very nice. We're finalizing that adoption ordinance right now. MuniCode has a sample recodification adoption ordinance that, that they do. We're in the middle of finalizing that and making sure we've caught everything we can. And I think what the plan is, and I talked with Brenda, is to bring it forward for first reading on January 24th, second reading on February 14th with a 30-day effective period. And during that 30 days, everyone's going to work to change their forms, change signs, things like that, where things need to be updated for the new code provisions.
And we just vote on the transition as a whole?
Right, it's one, one big summary ordinance. I will not give you a title that says every new section is changing.
I don't know if we have to keep an eye on it.
You'd be there all night.
We would be.
Yeah, so. Yeah, we can, so we can do it by summary per statute, so that's what we're going to do. And it'll be really exciting to have this new website. I can't wait for you guys to see it, it's not live yet, but it's so much more user-friendly and just cleaner looking. All the numbering is consistent than.
Yeah, I mean, it's about 800 pages.
It's good material when you need to sleep.
I'm sure.
But it will be handy when you need to find something, so just wanted to share that update.
So we'll have a by-search kind of index, I can look for fees or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. And it'll have hyperlinks within each chapter to go automatically to the sections you need to go to. I played around with it a little bit this afternoon. Yeah, it's really, it's nice.
And everything's historically, if we tried to look up something historically, does that?
Maybe they'll say like it's through the past, because I was worried to death about, you know, section seven, that two or four, what it is now. It's, it'll be on there too, so we'll know what the prior number was.
Forty null literature we can buy.
Right, and it'll be, we'll be able to remember where it came from.
Yeah, and so.
That part's going to be brought for staff.
The ordinance piece, we'll be repealing the entire code and then readopting when we recodify. So that link in your ordinance research, when you look at that ordinance, you're going to think, what in the world happened? But you will be able to go further back and see when ordinances were changed and how they were changed and things like that. The other exciting thing for staff is this will enable us to move forward with the other awesome things that MuniCode has in their software, which includes self-publishing. We will be able to go in and, and right now, what we do when we draft an ordinance is we do it in Word and we, we copy and paste what we can from MuniCode, or you try to find the last draft where it was changed. Formatting's never right, it's a challenge. This will go right into their program and into the adopted ordinance and, and make the changes very easily. And so it'll take a lot of, it'll ease a lot of staff time and big ordinance amendments especially.
And no more black books.
No more black books.
No more, yeah. Mary, you were here before.
The book on the dais that you have to get a screwdriver to take apart. We're all online, so that will be exciting.
I think that's brilliant. Comments, thoughts from council?
How long did it take to get to this point?
Well, Brenda started asking to do this probably eight or nine years ago. So when we finally got the funding in the FYE 21 budget, we went and moved forward really quickly. The first email I had, I think, was September of 21, so, or 20, so we were moving pretty quickly.
Catherine and I literally looked through every page on a telephone conference with the attorney.
How many hours was that meeting?
Well, it's about three or more. And then I printed it out and then we looked at it again and then, they were very efficient at MuniCode.
Yeah, it was great.
Amazing.
Yeah, so that'll be coming forward. It'll look weird repealing everything and readopting everything, but it's never.
For that, and the second in time.
No city ordinances, all city ordinances repealed.
I'm excited because this has been holding up some other things that we need to move forward, so now we can kind of get those things back in the pipeline and kind of move forward, so that's exciting.
It was fascinating how they knew state law did this, as they state law, you're in conflict with it, and they have all that research.
Yeah.
It was amazing how, how they did that. It was very thorough.
Wonderful.
Yay.
Anything else? Well, thank you, ma'am.
Exciting stuff. I know, we're super excited.
It is exciting. It, it's neat to be able to do that and it's better for the citizens to be able to look up.
That's what's.
How many chickens can you have?
It's so much easier for the.
All the fees being on the same page.
Yeah, that'd be amazing.
I'm just always like, Darryl, can you answer the email?
Oh, I'm always kicking stuff just.
All right.
I know, I'm like.
Nothing else? One thing I'd like, not like to do, but need to put out is I'm going to get more strict on political speech and on campaigning from the dais. So we can keep that down to nothing. It would be wonderful. We'll see how that works.